2020, wish everybody a happy new year and off to, off to a great, great start. We want to begin our meeting tonight as we typically do with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So let me call on Pastor Bo Turner and we've got a couple of Girl Scouts who are going to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Turner, would you all please stand as you are able for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Pastor Turner?
Can we bow for a moment of prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, as we enter into this new year, we're thankful for the wisdom and the grace that you have given us in 2019. Tonight, we ask that you would give wisdom and knowledge and understanding and grace, Lord, to our commissioners and to our mayor, Lord, as we conduct the business of our great community. We will continue to give you thanks and praise for every good and perfect gift comes from you. Blessed now are time together. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Our invocation tonight was given by Pastor Bo Turner. 2007, December 2007, Pastor Bo heeding the call of God moved from South Georgia, Macon, to become the senior pastor of Real Life Church, one of the fastest growing churches in the middle Georgia area, over 1,100 members now. Since taking over as senior pastor, he's launched a new television ministry airing on local CTN entitled Living the Real Life. Pastor Bo now resides in Gray with his lovely wife Melissa and their three children. Pastor Bo, thank you for what you are doing in our community and thank you for being here with us tonight. We appreciate you very much, sir. And our pledge of allegiance, the Girl Scouts that led us, the first is Carmen Exum. Carmen, where'd you go? Would you please stand? Carmen, Carmen Exum, daughter of Jay and Michelle Exum, she's a junior at Central High School. And at Central, Carmen is in the IB program, International Baccalaureate Program, which I understand is a tough program to be in, a hard, hard program. She's in the IB program. She's the stage manager for the drama club, plays in the orchestra. She's been a member of Girl Scout Troop 60206 for 12 years. Carmen's also been a member of Mercy University's Youth Choir for 10 years and participates in Delta Sigma Theta sororities, Delta Academy, and Delta Jims Youth Initiative. She's an active member of Abundant Word of Grace Church. And she is joined by Jacqueline. Jacqueline, would you stand and be recognized as well? Jacqueline Exum is also daughter of Jay and Michelle Exum. She's a freshman at Central High School and also enrolled in the International Baccalaureate Program. She's a member of the chorus as well. She's been a member of the Mercy University Youth Choir for 10 years and participates in Delta Sigma Theta, Delta Academy, and Delta Jims as well. Jacqueline enjoys playing soccer, singing, and is an active member of Abundant Word of Grace Church. She's been a member of Girl Scout Troop 60206 for 10 years. And you know, in this day and age when we hear so much bad stuff about young people, isn't it great to see two such shining examples of, of, yeah, we're proud of you and we wish you all the success in the world. Thank you for being here and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Last meeting we had was a pre-commission meeting on December 17th and the regular meeting of December 17th. Those minutes have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections, additions? If not, can I get a motion by slinging just a second by when to approve the minutes as prepared? All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and those minutes are approved. Next, we have got several invited guests and I am thrilled, thrilled, thrilled to be able to, to come down to the podium and, and call on first, the Macon United team. Is the Macon United football team here? Would y'all come down and join me at the podium, please? Don't look at me, look at them. Macon United is an extension of the Macon Bibb County Recreation Department's youth football program. Macon United is a travel football program made up of three teams, which include eight under, 10 under, and 12 under age brackets. Macon United competes in elite football leagues and tournaments on a local, statewide, and regional level. From December the 10th through the 15th, Macon United represented Macon Bibb County and the Macon Bibb County Recreation Department in the 2019 AAU Youth Tackle Football National Championship in Orlando, Florida. This year, the Macon United eight-under team competed against 12 teams and were crowned 2019 AAU National Champions with a 14-6 win over the West Orange Bobcats. Macon United, the eight U under, that's eight under, is coached by head coach Bam Dennis. Bam, where you, would you hold up your hand if you hear? Bam, Bam, Bam's not here, well, Bam. But his assistants, Mike Bernie, Mike Bernie is here, DeShawn Vares Lundie, DeShawn Vares and Marion, Marion Greer, Hot Dog Marion Greer, Xavier Mann, Dexter Davis Williams, and Keon Devro. Those are the assistant coaches. They do all the hard work anyway, don't they? We just wanted to say what a wonderful program we've got with the Macon Bibb Recreation Department and how they give young people a chance to compete and be recognized for doing great things. Y'all join me and give these young men a, a round of applause. National championship in the under eight. Hot dog, y'all. We're proud. Coach, any, would you, would you like to come, say one of the assistant coaches, anybody want to come up and say a word or two about these fine young men and, and what they've done for us? We, we are proud of them and we, we thank you for, for coaching them. Thank you very much, sir.
My name is DeShawn Vares Lundie. And these group of guys, they battled throughout the whole year. A lot of them had a lot of growth. A couple of them was their first time playing. But throughout the year, we had a lot of ups and downs, but in the end, we came out victorious. And I couldn't be more proud in the group of guys than I have right here in front of me. And I was glad to be able to coach them and go to war with them.
All right, wait.
So my, so my taller guy step back a little bit, so my less taller guy stand in the front a little bit.
Well, when we recognized the football team, we lost half our crowd. Commissioner Wynn, will you come down here also? We, we decided to try to recognize our employees for what they do for us each and every day. We've got so many unsung heroes that work for Macon Bibb County. And like I say, when things work right because of what they do, they don't get any credit for it because they're supposed to work right. But boy, oh boy, you let something go wrong and everybody wants to fuss at them and complain and say, say what a sorry good for nothing and this, that, or the other. But these folks answer the call, they work hard, they keep traffic lights going, they keep buildings in repair and maintain heating and cooling and fix leaks in the roofs and air conditioning work and so many other things. Paint, repaint and plumbing and heating and all. You know, it takes a lot of folks to, to keep all of the facilities in operation and going for us and like I say, add streetlights and traffic light, traffic signals and this, that, the other. We owe a lot to our facilities management team, but we, we were trying to figure out how to start this process of selecting a unit or a division to recognize first. And, and we came up with an idea that I'm going to let Commissioner Wynn, but it also says a lot about the folks at Facilities Management. Commissioner Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want them to come on down here. Get your crew down here in the front. First of all, we decided that we divided up into teams and break it, break the city departments down into teams that were about equal in size. And then, then I said to them, I gave them, I'm sorry, for the mayor's motorcade, which is where we collect items to take over to Milledgeville. And this year, we had a group, when I said we wanted to divide up and see who'd come in first and being 100% in their department to contribute, these guys stepped up to the plate. These men and women stepped up to the plate. Look at them. And some of these folks probably, when I went to see, they called me and said, the first day when we made the challenge, they were 100% committed. They had 100% participation. You guys, let's give them a round of applause, 100% participation. They said, would you come on down here and look at what we have? So I went down to your department and I saw the table full of nice things, not just small things, but clothing items. You guys, unbelievable. Thank you so much. They did so much for people that have less and sometimes we don't have a lot and sometimes we don't give you enough pay, right? But you, I'm, I'm trying, trying to stay out of that, but you know, I, I want to thank you because I know you told me it came from your heart, that you were giving from your heart for people that didn't have as much and for people that couldn't have as much. So thank you again. I want to recognize you for this great accomplishment and go next year and do it again. We'll, we'll give you something better next year, won't we, Ms. Mayor?
Don't get us in trouble.
I'm not getting in trouble.
I ain't going to be here next year either. That's exactly right. Okay, all right, all right. So what we want to do is, is call out names and, and if you will, come up and, and receive this little token of appreciation for the time that you've spent with us. And, and Rob, if you'd help me. First of all, Joel, please, with five years of, of service. Joel, are you here with us tonight? Okay? Rochelle Andrews, five years of service. Is Rochelle here with us tonight? Oh, flu, I'm glad she's not here then. Charles, Charles Thorpe, five years of service. Hot Dog, here he comes. Charles Thorpe, five years of service. Thank you for what you do for us and we appreciate your service. Glenda McGriff, five years of service. Glenda, bless you. Thank you for all that you do for us. Jason Smith, five years of service. Jason, thank you very much, sir. We, we appreciate you. Quantisha Jones. Quantisha, thank you very much, sir. Five years, five years of service. Actually, they've got five and a half years, five and a half years of service. Thomas Wells, Thomas Wells has got 6.6 years of service with us, 6.6. Thomas Wells, he's not here? Okay, we'll get that to him. Douglas Davenport, Douglas Davenport, all right, got 6.9 years of service with us. Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Barbara Barra, Barbara Barra's got 7, 7.1 years. Barbara Barra, all right, here's to come. Barbara, thank you very much for what you do for us. Token of our appreciation, please, ma'am. Mark Tressler, 7.3 years. Mark Tressler. Mark, bless you, appreciate, we appreciate you and all that you do for us to keep us going. Lakedra Fitzpatrick, eight years of service. Lakedra, thank you. We appreciate you more than you know. Thank you very much. Calvin Fountain, eight years of service. Calvin Fountain, is he with us? Hey, come on, hey, come on. Bashful Bo. Calvin, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you. Just a token of our appreciation. Thomas Carroll, eight, eight point, eight point two eight years. Mr. Carroll, thank you, sir. We, we appreciate it very, very much. Willie Matthews, eight point four years. Mr. Willie Matthews here with us tonight? Yamsa Hamilton. Oh, look at that, that, I bet, I'd call you Tina. Tina, I, I see you almost every day and I sure do appreciate all this you do for us. You, you keep my office looking so good, better than I do. Barry Millirns. Barry not here, okay? Carl Crump, oh, hot beaded dog, that a man, the man with the plan. I almost didn't recognize you without your baseball cap on, Carl, but thank you very much. We, we appreciate, we appreciate you. You've got 13.9 years of service. Carl, thank you very much for what you do for us. Jamario Smith. Jamario, hot dog, 14 years of service. Jamario, 14.2 years of service. We appreciate you. Thank you very much, sir. William Bell. Hey, hot dog, William Bell, 14 and a half years of service. William, thank you. Just a token of our appreciation, we sure do appreciate you. Frank James, 17 years. Frank James, 17 and a half, 17 and a half years of service. Gloria Dwight. Oh, this comes Gloria, okay. 18 years of service. Gloria, bless you. I see you on a daily basis and we sure do appreciate what you do for us. Thank you so much. Wanda Tomlin, 18.2 years of service. Wanda, thank you very much. We, we appreciate you. Tatisha Reeves, or Tatina, I'm sorry, Tatina Reeves. This comes, 20 years of service, 20.1. Thank, thank you. LaShonda Taylor, 20 years of service. LaShonda, thank you very, very much. We appreciate you. Just a token of our appreciation. Kevin Pauls, 20 years of service for Kevin Pauls. Kevin, thank you, sir. We appreciate you. My goodness, who's this fellow now? Robert S. Riles, does anybody know Robert S. Riles? That's gotta be Rob, Rob. 22.7 years of service. Rob, bless you. Thank you very much. We got any more back there to hand out? Dennis Jeski. Dennis, 20, 23 and a half years of service. 23.4, but I rounded it up. Thank you, Dennis, absolutely. And Cassandra Bell, 25 years of service. Cassandra, thank you very much. We, we appreciate you. Now, all together, we, we are celebrating 461 years of service collectively between these folks in this department, 461 years of service. Y'all, y'all just, Commissioners, what do you think? Don't, won't y'all help me recognize these hardworking folks and tell them how much we appreciate it? Each and every one, thank you all very much. No, thank you, Rob. Rachel, you want to come get that? Next item on our agenda, or public comments on agenda items, these are people who wish to speak to us about an item that is on the agenda for a vote tonight. But we've got a very brief agenda of actual items to be considered tonight. Did anybody sign up to?
These are all the people who are talking about the hunting and subventions, so we have a whole stack of people waiting for that.
Okay, but.
That's a new business.
I was going to say. Those people who signed up to talk to us about a non-agenda item, that is one that is not on the agenda for action tonight, we will recognize you a little bit later in the program, but believe me, it's going to be very, very short before we get to you. We've got several people that want to talk to us about an item that's on the agenda for referral. So it's not, it's not for, for action tonight, but they want to, and we want to hear from them and we will very shortly. Committee reports is the next item on the agenda. There are no committee reports because we canceled that meeting because of the holidays, so no report from operations and finance, no report from economic and community development, no report from public safety, no report from facilities and engineering. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda now, one item has been tabled, that's the second item on the agenda, item B has been tabled. The other five alcohol license applications are on the agenda for action tonight. And the other five, all, all of them are accompanied by the requisite paperwork that is required of an alcohol license. That is number one, a certification from the sheriff's office of a satisfactory background check, a certification from Business Development Services that the appropriate license fees have been tendered, a certificate from planning and zoning, that it's in the appropriate zone and is zoned for that kind of business, and a measurement form from the county engineer to say that it meets all the distance separation requirements for that location to sell alcohol, and finally, a copy of the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph. So each of these applications is accompanied by all of that paperwork. The first application is by Desai Enterprises Incorporated doing businesses, the Amoco Food Store at 2579 Emery Highway. It is an existing convenience store. They are looking for a new license for beer package to go from that location, 2579 Emery Highway. The second application was tabled. The third application is Kenjo Kitchen and Cocktails LLC at 497 Second Street. And it is for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premises at that location. I understand that this is a new license for the location at the corner of Second Street and Papa Street with the Maniacs on the second floor, but this is the ground floor location. It's going to be the Kenjo Chicken, Kenjo Kitchen. Next license application is, is for Anika Gas and Go Incorporated doing businesses, the Shell Station at 4331 Pineona Avenue. It also is an existing location. This is a new license application for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Next is a, a license application from 1904 Gas and Food LLC at 1904 Shurling Drive in Macon. That's an existing location, convenience store, new license application for beer and wine package sales to go at that location, 1904 Shurling Drive. Next is a, a new application for the Capricorn Museum and Sound Studio at 540 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It is for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premises inside the building only. That's a new location or just rehabilitated location and, and new, new application. The committee of the whole recommends approval of these five. They tabled the second one, which is the one for VK Napier LLC doing businesses, Napier Neighborhood Grocery. That one was tabled, but the other five, the committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion about the other five? Hearing none, there, there is, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. What I wanted to say was just to kind of summarize some discussion that has taken place over the last several months. And these concerned the fact that we are asked to approve a number of these alcohol licenses. And so as a commission, we have asked for information as to the locations of these different outlets for alcoholic beverages. And I know that in the, the district that I represent, there are large concentrations of, of facilities or stores that offer alcohol in one form or another. And so whereas a lot of times we are bound by the law to approve a number of these licenses, there are growing concerns among a number of our citizens and our community organizations about, first of all, the concentration of alcoholic outlets in the community, where they're located, the proximity to certain things like churches and schools, even though they meet the, the, the law as far as the distances, there is still that concern. There's one that's on Pineona Avenue, on the corner of Pineona Avenue and Mercy University Drive, and there is a school that's just down the hill. I mean, you could stand there on that location and throw a rock down into the, the school park, parking lot. And so that's a concern. And the other thing is community impact. And we have had that issue brought up by the group from the west side earlier in pre-commission. Please know that this commission has these, we share these concerns and I know that there's going to be further discussion about whether we just need to approve because the law says that these facilities meet the requirements or if we're not going, take into consideration the impact that these businesses are having on our neighborhood. So I just wanted to make those remarks and let you know that there's more discussion that's been ongoing on these licenses and the impacts on the, on the community. So you'll hear more about it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuing these licenses for the five other applications that I read out, not the one that was tabled, but the other five signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, those five and, and the sixth one was tabled and as Commissioner Lucas said, we'll, we'll hear more about that in the future. That then takes us to old business. We have one, excuse me, we have one item of old business and, and that's qualifying fees, the schedule for qualifying fees that the Board of Elections need. And we consider this at the committee of the whole shortly before this meeting and I'll ask the clerk to read it by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission establishing and fixing the qualifying fees for each elected county office to be filled in the upcoming 2020 Macon Bibb County general primary and nonpartisan general elections, requesting the publication of said qualifying fees by the Macon Bibb County Board of Elections and the legal organ of record for Macon Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
A committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That, believe it or not, is all of the old business. I told you, we took three weeks off for the Christmas holidays and the New Year, so that's all the old business. And now we're going to new business and all of the new business is going to be referred business is going to be referred to a committee for further study and evaluation. Committee meetings will start next Tuesday, a week from today, but they're in the morning. They start at nine o'clock in the morning in the commission meeting room. First item of new business is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Agpro LLC in the amount of $124,798.76 for a John Deere 5075M utility tractor for the amount of $115,178.84, and for a John Deere HX6 lift-type rotary cutter for the amount of $9,619.92 for use by the Public Works Department to be paid from the capital improvement fund. I'm gonna refer that to Operations and Finance Committee. Next is item B, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Agpro LLC, same outfit, in the amount of $147,118.91 for a John Deere 6110M utility tractor with a mid-mount boom mower and accessory equipment for use by the Public Works Department to be paid from capital improvement funds. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement in substantially the same form as the attached here to Exhibit A with Allison Landscape and Design LLP for ground maintenance services at various parks and recreation facilities in the amount of $338,802 to be paid from budgeted funds. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of $300,000 for lighting to be installed at the East Macon Fields to be paid by SPOLOST bond proceeds and/or SPOLOST revenues. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee.
Is that Dolores Brooks?
Yes. I, I, I'm assuming so, East Macon. Dolores Brooks, you're right. That, that's the typographical, we'll change that, you know, in the committee. Chairman Watkins, they're gonna want to change that and be sure we got the right name, Dolores Brooks Recreation Center. Thank you very much for that correction. Item E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting Incorporated in the amount of $108,670 for services related to the installation of the Musco lighting equipment at East Macon Fields, again, Dolores Brooks Recreation Center, to be paid by SPOLOST bond proceeds and/or SPOLOST revenues. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to end, end a professional service agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated to provide a file interface between court management software and misdemeanor probation supervision software in the amount of $20,160 payable from 2012 SPOLOST public safety, vehicle equipment, and other computer software funds in the FY 2020 budget. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance. You're gonna be busy next week, Chairman Watkins. See what happens when you take three weeks off. Item G is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an independent contract agreement between Macon Bibb County and Robotics Incorporated in the amount of $82,500 for pavement inspection and evaluation of county maintained roads. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item H is an ordinance to amend certain provisions of Chapter Two, Article Six of the inaugural code of ordinances to substitute the word, the, I think that's supposed to be, the word "board" for the word "commission" in the names of certain advisory bodies created within the Macon Bibb County government. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item I is an ordinance to amend Section Two dash eight fifty-one of the code to clarify the appointment process for members of the pedestrian safety review board. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next is a resolution to confirm the reappointment of Louis Frank Thompson to the Fire Civil Service Board. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next is a resolution to name the intersection of Hopewell Road and Midway Road after PFC Horace Johnson Jr. killed in action to provide for the installation of a suitable memorial. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item L is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of $13,260 to the municipal court for the purchase of computers, monitors, printers, and other supplies and equipment to transfer $11,000 from the municipal court salaries full-time line item to the municipal court professional services judge pro temp line item. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item M is an ordinance to amend Chapter Six of the code by adding a new Article Five for purposes of establishing a blight elimination revolving loan fund. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. Item N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a professional services contract with Mead and Hunt Incorporated for design of the system upgrade for the Tainer Gate Hoist for the Finley Rither Dam at Lake Tobosovki in the amount of $147,900 to be paid from SPOLOST bond proceeds and/or SPOLOST revenues. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item O is an ordinance amending the salary of select positions and ranks throughout Bibb County for the purpose of better aligning the Macon Bibb County's current salaries with other employers in the market. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. Item P is an ordinance amending the salaries of select public safety positions and ranks for the purpose of better aligning our current salaries with other employers in the market. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. Item Q is an ordinance to provide for an increased local preference in the procurement of goods and services. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item R is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of $100,000 to sponsor programs for the purpose of funding the 2020 census outreach efforts. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Certainly, any, any commissioner can co-sponsor any of these and just, just let the clerk know, and then you, let you sign on. Item S is an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of $52,806 to Business Development Services Contract Labor Contractual Services line item for the purpose of funding three temporary employees for a period of three months, and for purposes of funding a contract for electronic signature capabilities for online license renewals. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item T is an ordinance to provide a one-time safe haven period for late payment of business fee, business license fees. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item U is an ordinance to amend Section Sixteen dash twenty-five of the code to prohibit the firing of rifles within 250 feet of a residence in Macon Bibb County. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. That's all of the new business that has come down thus far over the holidays, and, but more may come down from the attorney's office during the remainder of this week. So if you are interested, I would urge you to get a copy of the agenda, which is published by the clerk on Friday afternoon, that will include all of the ordinances and resolutions that will be referred for committee review beginning next Tuesday morning, the fourteenth, at nine o'clock a.m. in the commission meeting room. Now it's time for public comments on non-agenda items. And like I said, there are a number of people that want to talk to us about the rifle ordinances as I, as I understand it. The first is Dr. Ronald K. Powell, who wants to talk to us about gun shooting in subdivisions. Mr. Powell, are you still here? Oh, yeah, good. Would you come to the podium, please, sir? And you are recognized, recognized for, for five minutes. Commissioner Watkins, I got you blinking. Did I miss you?
It's about the, on a couple of those items, you mentioned committee of the whole, and you recognize them to be in fact time sensitive, so I'm just curious as to why.
Because in my judgment, it pertains to more than one committee. And anytime I got more than one committee that's gotta say so in it, I try to give it to the committee of the whole, but that's...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, uh, Mr., Doc, Dr. Powell, thank you, sir. I appreciate your patience with us. You were recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, esteemed members of this Bibb County Commission. So glad you let me come and speak with you tonight about this issue. And thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to tell you what's going on in our particular locale. I'm in West Fall Estates. I've been there since 1999. In that time, we've had, there are, there's a strip of land just behind us in the middle of a subdivision. It's not hunting land. It's, I guess it's agricultural. And what we have is we have people going back, and they're shooting rifles, firearms of every kind. And, and they're not just shooting, they're shooting at my house. My house has been sick, it hit six times with rifle bullets. We've been pelleted with twenty-two shells coming down on my roof. We have had people shooting, I can't play this, but somebody shooting blow darts at my house and had a blow dart in, in the side of the house. It's not just in the back, it's in the front. So we've got people that will indiscriminately do this. And of course, around the holidays, we have people that will do, you know, celebratory gunfire and that kind of thing. The problem that I have is, is that a year and a half ago, I had a first cousin, and she was sick on Sunday, and she decided she was gonna iron her clothes, and she stayed home from church. And a guy that was behind the house doing target, target practice shot through her house, through three walls, and into her heart, and killed her. So this is very close to an issue with me. Now, I have given you pictures, all of you should have pictures of the, the land lot behind us. There's a, there's a tree line, and they hide behind those tree lines. You'll see there that we have bird feeders, and they shoot twenty-two bullets through that continuously. That, this is, this is a dangerous situation. I can't walk in my backyard without the threat of somebody shooting me. Well, we have called the, the deputies out and, on two different occasions, and they said that they didn't, their hands were tied. They could not do anything about it. And so this last one, I had my grandson, and he was helping me with cutting the leaves under and that kind of thing. And while we were standing there, people started shooting from that tree line at us. When I called the sheriff's office, an officer came out and, and he gave me a, a case card. And it says on the top of it vandalism. He said he couldn't do anything. And so we're, we're sitting in a situation where we're in a firing zone. When I cried out to this guy, stop it, or I'll have to call the sheriff, it sounded like this guy had a bump stock on his rifle. I mean, hundreds of rounds up in the air, hitting our house, raining down on top of my house. This is a dangerous situation. If it were you, if it were your house, and the sheriff came and said, we can't do anything about it, I think it would be different. I think you would see things from a different perspective. And truly, I mean, I've overcome a lot. I had four strokes last year. And, and, and I want to live longer. And I don't want somebody taking me out because they want to shoot birds in my backyard or blow my windows out of my house. This is, this is not right. We need something that has teeth, that our sheriff's deputies can go out and they can actually do something about it. We shouldn't be able to ever call 911 and say, people are shooting at me. And they say, we don't have a law that we can do anything with, or an ordinance. Now, when I was a kid, I was a police officer. Now I'm a doctor. But you know, when I was a police officer in Macon, Georgia, we had laws. And those laws were, were on the book, and we can, we could take them to court. You don't shoot at people with a rifle, a handgun, or a shotgun. You just don't do that. It's criminal, at the, at the least, criminal negligence, that knowing that they can do something, though it might be legal, and they hurt somebody, which is not legal. And our city has a problem with this, not just in my neighborhood. There are a lot of neighborhoods like that. I thank you. I hope you'll look at the pictures, and that when you bring this to council, committee, that you'll do something, give them something they can do something with.
Dr. Powell, thank you very much for your time and your patience here tonight. We sympathize with your situation and appreciate you being here.
Thanks, sir.
Howard Ganey also wants to talk to us about hunting regulations. Mr. Ganey, thank you for being here for your patience. You were recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. That's a hard one to follow there. Mr. Mayor and committee members, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Howard Ganey, and my wife and I live at Pinnacle Point Subdivision and have for the past eighteen and a half years. We are here this evening as concerned citizens hoping to bring to your attention a potentially dangerous and concerning situation, even in our part of the world. This past October, we began hearing the sounds of high-powered rifles, discharges within close proximity of our homes. I myself am an avid hunter. I have two deer in my freezer right now, but I would not shoot one in a neighbor's backyard. I enjoy the sport, but I would never presume it was safe to do so within such close proximity to residential neighborhoods. The neighborhoods change, they grow. There's new ones being added every day. I called the Department of Natural Resources to ask if they knew of hunters being this close to our homes, and they investigated it, and finally determined that the, the hunters were within their rights to hunt on the land leased to them. We can see the deer stand in plain sight driving in, into our subdivision. I have a picture of that that I wanted to submit if I could. I'll do that later.
Sure.
This, this is the same street that our kids have played, where our grandchildren now play, where we walk or jog, enjoy meeting with our neighbors in the street to stop and chat, or drive golf carts, or walk to and each other's, to and from each other's homes. I'm here today to tell you, all of that has stopped. It stopped when we realized there were guns pointed in our direction at any given time during hunting season, whether it be from someone walking in the woods behind our homes or sitting in the tree stand, which is visible from our entrance, that puts us in the crosshairs as we enter and exit our neighborhood. The, from October to January, hunters are allowed to be where they are, shooting weapons of their choice, because currently the law is on their side, and they have rights. We understand that. But I asked you here today, what about our rights? Who's looking after our rights to live in peace without fear and without worry that our homes, our cars, or even worse, ourselves could be in potential danger? Dr. Powell presented it very well. I don't want to be here a year from now using the death of my wife or one of my grandchildren as an example of a tragedy that could have been avoided. It is unfair that we are expected to be held hostage during the most beautiful time of the year when the weather starts to change and everyone enjoys being outside, but we can't. We're not here today to tell any hunter that they must stop hunting, just not this close to homes. We're asking that you put back on the books the very ordinances or laws that were overlooked or not renewed when the city and the county merged. And these laws should, at the very least, be amended to prevent and prohibit anyone from hunting or firing weapons within a thousand yards to one mile in proximity to residential areas. The woodlands all around us are becoming more and more inhabited, and the laws need to change to protect the people from these types of dangers. If you leave here with anything today, please remember this. One of the most popular firearms that is used for deer hunting is a .3006 rifle. It's got different grains, people use them all the time, I do too. This came, all this information I'm about to give you came from two sources, Hornady Manufacturing and Sniper Magazine. I load my own bullets, so I'm very aware of this. And, and keep this into perspective as we talk, one mile is seventeen hundred and sixty yards, okay? A .3006 bullet with its original one-fifty grain spearpoint bullet at twenty-seven hundred feet per second, that's a rifle. A .3006 was certified for an extreme reach at a forty-five degree angle fired at four point seven... four-point-seven-five miles. An effective fatal firing range of a thirty alt-six is a thousand yards. Think about that. Average velocity, feet per second, of a thirty alt-six bullet. At five hundred yards, a thirty alt-six bullet is traveling at eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet per second. That's moving. That'll hurt you. And I have this, you can have as well. Members of this council, as you are aware, change is constant. Within three hundred to five hundred feet of our subdivision, there are new developments going up all around us with more people. A new public shopping center is going in, all within a mile from these new communities. These changes with the oversight of firearms needs to be addressed and done very quickly before these communities grow and expand even more. Again, all of this within three hundred to five hundred yards of this hunting property. I said feet earlier, it's yards. With all due respect, council members, this is your responsibility to make sure the laws are in place to protect the citizens of Macon and Bibb County, and we as a community are asking for help.
Thank you, Mr. Ganey. We appreciate that. Your time has expired, sir. If you've got just another second or two to-
I do. One more comment and I'll be done.
Wrap up, yes, sir.
Our proposal would be a minimum of five hundred yards for anything non-rifle. That's related shotguns, compound bows, crossbows, all rifles. A minimum of a thousand yards to one mile from any home or subdivision. And with that, I'll close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ganey. We appreciate you being here. Thank you for that information as well. Uh, Mr. Jim Majewski? Mr. Majewski, thank you for your patience and for being here with us. I understand you want to talk to us about hunting regulations as well, sir.
Same thing, your, uh, your, uh, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Majewski, and I live at one-thirty-two Pinnacle Point Drive. Um, I don't have quite the same experience that the good doctors had, thank God. Uh, but the reason for me being here tonight is to make the, the council aware of an extremely dangerous situation that exists in our community. Approximately two and a half months ago, several deer hunters leased property in the Macon-Bibb County for the purpose of hunting. They proceeded to set up a deer stand on a natural gas and petroleum pipeline easement in about three hundred feet from our housing development, a, a development where I live. Thus, in the morning and during the day and in the evening, those of us that live in a normal, quiet neighborhood suddenly were exposed to hu- uh, multiple high-powered gunshots. Investigating the gunshots, I found the hunters were hunting deer with high-powered guns, guns that can kill a deer probably at a thousand yards. That's like ten football fields put end to end. And then to my amazement, I found that they were perfectly legal. I contacted DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, the Sheriff's Department, and found out that there was no law on the books or ordinances preventing them from, from, from hunting the, um, the deer that they were hunting. It's, it's really, we have been fortunate enough not to experience the same thing the good doctors experienced, but it's only a matter of time. When they're shooting four or five times, and, and anybody I know that's a decent hunter, uh, you know, one shot, and if they can't hit something within one shot, then they don't shoot four or five times. I was told, the sheriff went out there and talked to them, and they said that it's, it's okay because they're shooting into the dirt. The dirt is where this pipeline, uh, both the, the, uh, the pipeline that feeds, and the pipeline happens to feed Atlanta Airport with gasoline and aviation fuel, and there's a natural gas line there as well. Pipeline's been in there thirty years. When I talked to the pipeline people, they said they can tell us about where the pipeline is, but not exactly, within a couple of feet. And over that period of time, it wouldn't be unusual at all for that pipe to come closer to this surface of the earth. Anyway, um, it, and it's also interesting that even with a twenty-two, now, uh, Howard gave you some, some examples of high-powered rifles, but even with a twenty-two, a twenty-two, um, just something you can buy at Walmart, can travel almost a mile and, and be lethal at, at a mile. I understand that the same member that, I know that there's a thing on the council agenda talking about two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Two-hundred-and-fifty feet is, it's, uh, it's not even a concern in my mind. I mean, we're, we're, we need to talk about something in thousands of yards to be in a safe distance. Uh, nobody should be allowed to set up a, a deer stand or a hunting situation, uh, in an, in a subdivision where we live. Anyway, if the council would take this into consideration, I would deeply, deeply appreciate it, as is the citizens of, of, of Macon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majewski. We appreciate it. And Ellen Majewski, do you wish to make additional comments?
I would just like to pass and give my time to Dr. Dale, 'cause he wasn't certain he could be here on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Majewski. Appreciate it. Uh, Dr. Ronald Powell?
I'm, I'm sorry, okay.
Good evening, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak a few minutes to you about my neighborhood. Um, I live in this neighborhood. My wife and I moved there about sixteen years ago, and, uh, this is at Pinnacle Point, where my neighbors who have already spoke and, uh, live. And I moved there because of the beauty, and I moved there because of the tranquility. We moved away, and we had the opportunity to come back to Macon. I'm a cancer surgeon. I didn't look at another neighborhood because I love the beauty and tranquility of that house. The woods in the area that this, the hunters are hunting on are where my son and his neighbors and his friends played in the woods and enjoyed that space and that, that, that opportunity. And right now, I have neighbors that can't even let their grandchildren out in their backyard because someone's out there shooting guns, high-powered guns that are very lethal. Um, and as a surgeon, I see what these guns can do to people, and, uh, it is, it is not a pretty sight. My wife was walking our dogs on the road, on a public road the other day, and the, the deer stand not far being away. Four shots rang out. The two dogs broke free from her leash and ran. My wife ducked and hit the ground 'cause she was afraid she was being shot at. And this is a situation we are dealing with in our neighborhood, and this could be anybody in here's neighborhood. If you've got land, if you've got trees, and if you've got deer walking through your yard, you too could be subject to people coming in your backyard and shooting high-powered rifles. And believe me, there's an incredible number of deer, deer hunters that shoot themselves and shoot their buddies on a yearly basis, so they're not that great a shots. And you certainly don't want them hanging out in your neighborhood, your neighborhood, or my neighborhood. And I would really encourage you to expand that two-hundred-and-fifty feet, which I could probably kill somebody with a pellet gun, let alone a high-powered rifle, to at least a thousand yards, if not more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doctor. We, we've got Ms. Majewski's name, but would you please give us your name and, and address so that we, we could write it down?
Absolutely. My name is Dr. Paul Dale.
D-A-L-E.
D-A-L-E.
Very good, Doctor.
And my address is two-eleven Pinnacle Court.
Two-eleven Pinnacle Court.
Macon, three-one-two-on-six.
Thank you, Doctor Dale.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, now, Dr. Ronald Powell? Somebody signed up for you twice. Uh, uh, well, this is Sheila Powell. Just here, just here in support, okay? Jimmy Corby? Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it, and you were recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
And, uh, thank you, county commissioners. I also live in Pinnacle Point neighborhood. For twenty years, I've enjoyed living there. It's very peaceful, and we appreciate, uh, Joe Allen and his, uh, oversight for us there. But in October, I also heard a lot of shooting. I didn't know where it was coming from until I was, uh, told that there are some deer stands. Actually, there are two deer stands there. And so, this morning, I wanted to just be sure I was being accurate when I came here today. Uh, the closest house that I know to that, to one of those deer stands is a hundred-and-seventy-seven yards, and mine is two-hundred-and-seventeen yards. And so, we're well in range of some danger happening. And I plead with the commissioners, extend that, that length before people can shoot a rifle that can reach a home. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We, we appreciate you being here and, and appreciate the information. Karen Dale. Ms. Dale, thank you for being here. You were recognized for up to five minutes.
Um, sorry. Um, I'm just here, I was one of the ones walking, I have five dogs, and I walk the entrance into our home, um, every single day. That's how I get my exercise. I take two dogs at a time, next to, next two, and then one other one. And I was the one that hit the floor whenever, hit the ground, when I heard the gunshots ring out. And these gunshots will start early in the morning. I've heard them as early as eight-fifteen. I've heard them as late as six o'clock. And, um, you know, the safety of our neighbors, I, and like my husband was saying, we have lived in three houses in that same neighborhood in the last twenty years. Didn't even look anywhere else. We used to live in Riverly Downs, never even looked over there. We came back to the lake, 'cause we always felt safe. All of our neighbors, um, are generally older people. We don't have very many young people, younger, I should say. But there is a new family that moved in at the top of the, one of the cul-de-sacs that is actually one of the houses that is probably one of the closest houses to where these deer stands are. And she is principal at Weaver. And she, I don't think she's, I don't think she's here tonight, but, uh, she and her husband moved in about, well, a little bit before Christmas. They have two little boys, ages six and eight. And when I was talking to her the other day, she informed me that, um, they were sitting out right before Christmas, I think it was a Sunday before Christmas, and the boys were playing in their backyard, and she heard gunfire. And she grabbed her two little boys and brought them into the home. Now, these are two little boys that I've seen running, we have a big, uh, sort of like an open-air hill right across from her house, and they've been running, playing, you know. You don't ever see kids outside playing anymore. And I, and I thought to myself immediately, wow, this is pretty bad, that this lady can have her two, and they're the only children, pretty much, except for mother people's grandchildren that are in our neighborhood. But I'm thinking, this is a principal at Weaver. She's moved into our neighborhood. I don't know what part of Macon she lived in before, but she has to bring her children in from being outside playing on a beautiful day because there's gunfire going off. And she asked me, she said, "Does this happen all the time?" And I said, "No, ma'am. No, this is never," and I told her, "We lived here almost twenty years, never, ever happened before." And, uh, I walk my dogs up and down that hill. I actually bought myself an orange hunter vest to wear because I am scared for my life, just trying to live everyday life, get exercise, that kind of thing. It's a beautiful neighborhood. We have great neighbors. Everybody pretty much knows each other, um, you know, we all get along. And yet, these hunters' rights have infringed on our day, our activities of daily living. And we would, we really want the law changed, and we appreciate anything anyone could do to help us get that.
Thank you, Ms. Dale.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Dottie Scrimshaw also wants to express her concern. Dottie Scrimshaw? Thank you for being here, Ms. Scrimshaw. You were recognized for up to five minutes.
Well, I won't talk five minutes because they've already covered most of it. I live at Pinnacle Point, too. But I just think our commissioners can help us in this problem because, just because something's a law, does not mean that it's right and that it shouldn't be changed. And that's what we really need to do, is to change this law that people can hunt in such close proximity to these homes, that we pay a lot of taxes, and our homes are being devalued, actually, because people that come there to look at our homes if we're about to sell, and they know that there's a hunting area right there in the midst of our neighborhood, I'm sure that they're going back off from it. And I just think the law needs to be changed. And I know these hunters will say, "Well, we've got a right. It's not against the law." But that doesn't, just because it's not against the law, doesn't make it right and prudent for us to have it, that there's not more restrictions for our neighborhoods. The city has restrictions. You can't hunt in the city. Well, the city has moved out to the suburbs. And so, I think that law, you know, can be extended, and I, we just beg for y'all's help as much as you can to help us with this, 'cause we have a beautiful neighborhood, and y'all are all welcome to come out to see us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Scrimshaw. I appreciate it. And Dean Smith? Miss, also wants to talk to us about hunting regulations. Ms. Smith, you were recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to talk. Uh, my wife and I, we live at two-forty-one Shoreline Way, which is Treetop subdivision, so we back up next to all these good folks from Pinnacle Point. Uh, we have the same issue that they have. We're hearing the gunshots, uh, this hunting season. And, you know, uh, like most of these folks, we own guns and have no issues with hunters, but in this close proximity to this neighborhood, it's very concerning. Uh, this is a, one of the newer neighborhoods in town. It's recently redeveloped, and there are younger families and, and children in the neighborhood, and we are quite concerned about it. Uh, we do get out a lot and walk and, and would appreciate any assistance the commissioners could give us in changing this law and making the, the distance for discharging firearms greater. Something up close to a mile would be, seem to be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We, we appreciate you being here. That's all of the people that have signed up to talk about that. Commissioner Allen, upon a personal privilege, uh-
Please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, most of these people are here 'cause I asked them to come, due to the fact that one gentleman who's spoken had gone down to a deer, he had not gone to the deer stand, someone else had, but our deputies, some of our deputies went out. And instead of, you know, when you get a ticket, you're actually arrested by law, but they gave him a ticket to go to court. And when I heard about it, in Superior Court with Judge Coven, I went down there with him, and they, some of the deputies are the ones that are doing the shooting, and they're sending other deputies out there to protect the deputies that are doing the shooting. Now, I have an issue with that. I notified Judge Davis, I met Sheriff Davis about it, talked to him about it, and it's the way the law is written, as they've all spoken about. But you know, just this past Saturday, I was in Tennessee, and there was a hunter up there, there was two of them, I think, shot and killed a thirty-two or thirty-three-year-old man and his eight-year-old daughter because they thought they were deer. And they were out there just walking. That can happen in Macon, Georgia. It happens in sub-south out there in Ms. Lucas's district, as you, 'cause she knows this happened out off of Griffin Road. It continues to happen out there. They have, the people have no choice but to try to hide. It happens not just at Pinnacle Point, at Lake Tobasofki. It happens at other locations. Now, it's happening close to Barrington, where people are hunting, 'cause we're overcrowded with deer. But I asked in the first resolution I sent down that they use buckshot or they use loadshot. The attorney for us at the time said the state court solicitor would not go along with it. As you saw, she was here earlier today, and she don't see why we should do anything. Well, we're the ones that make the laws. We the ones that can do things for Bibb County. Macon had an ordinance where you could not shoot like that, and when they consolidated Macon and Bibb County, it was my understanding that most of those ordinances would also come to the unincorporated area, because the unincorporated area is growing so fast. More people are moving out there, but if you want to run people away, you don't do nothing about this. You've already heard what these individuals do for a living. Most of them, a lot of them live at Lake Tobasofki, where you know the tax value they pay. All right, it, uh, out where, toward where Scotty lives, I mean, where the doctor live out there. Same thing occurred with his house, and he's getting shot on. They had a man, a bullet that was shot up in the air, and it fell down, hit on a man's head out that way. I mean, so there's a lot of other people out there that could not be here tonight, and they would exactly tell you the same thing. We have got to do our job, and if it's going to court to get this law changed, or send it to the legislature to find out what's going on, because it's not just happening here in Macon, Georgia. It's happened in the state of Georgia, it's happened in Tennessee, it's happened in other locations, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, Commissioner Jones, do you have a point of personal privilege?
Yes, sir, of course, thank you. Popick, and, and I think we've got to do something about it. We've got to do something right away. I had a conversation with Sheriff Davis recently. He agreed, something's got to be done. I'd like to ask Mr. Ganey, I think it was, maybe he can tell me, I think you said a thousand yards to one mile, which would be about seventeen-hundred-and-sixty yards. What's a safe distance? Can you tell me that?
No, a thousand yards, but I would, I would, if you could get a-
A thousand yards, safe enough?
Well, let's don't get, let's don't get into a question-and-answer session that-
Well, just one, that's a point of personal privilege, let him answer.
Yeah, 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 but that only goes so far.
Let me finish.
A thousand yards.
A thousand yards. So, it needs to be more than a thousand yards to be safe.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Got, Commissioner Sleskin, do you all line on as well?
Yeah, this is really not the time or the place to, you know, debate this. But we had this problem in District Two. It was off the Gray Highway, just past Walmart there. And DNR had said, you know, it's okay to, you know, hunt this, this land. We basically found out that, and relied upon the, the law, that you cannot discharge a weapon in Macon-Bibb County. And I, I just need a clarification, you know, Duke, on what that, on what that law is. But the sheriff's office, you know, went in there, they stopped it, they talked to, to DNR, you know, you can't do this. But it just seems to me that it's just as simple as, you know, making the change from the city of Macon to Macon-Bibb County. And, and that's what I thought. I thought that was carried over during consolidation. At least, that's what I was told. You know, but we took care of it. You know, lickety-split, to tell you the truth. And I think we can do that in this instance, too.
Very good. We've got one more. Commissioner Watkins, you have a point of personal privilege about this as well, sir?
Commissioner Allen answered one of my questions. My other, though, how long, is this a fairly new occurrence? Is this, this was the first season this happened, or has this been going on for many years?
First season for us.
First season?
First season for us.
And I heard there was a pending court case. Am I assuming we know who's doing this, is inside of just a few?
What happened is that, because I went out there, I confronted the hunters. The hunters, they, I got DNR out there, I got the sheriff out there, and I was considered a nuisance. So, they have a restraining order against me for blowing my horn. And I don't understand the restraining order. I blow a horn, and they've got a gun, but the restraining order's against me. So, that, that's what the, that's what the court, that's the system. The other thing also, I did check with the, with the DNR and so on, and if you're within fifty yards of a public highway, you, you can't shoot. Well, fifty yards is a hundred and fifty feet. So, if they're right alongside the highway shooting, they can stop. But that, the sheriff, when I talked to Sheriff Davis about it, he said there was nothing he could do about it.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I appreciate that. That answered your question, Commissioner. I sound like we're going to have an interesting committee meeting next, next week. Commissioner Jones, you got another, another thought that you wanted to share with us?
Mr. Chairman, as I recall, from the meetings of the task force that put together the consolidated government, when it came to guns, they deferred to what the county, they went to the least restrictive, went to the least restrictive measures. So, that's what's in place for all of us now. So, with, with, and with the situation now, where you've got subdivisions and people living there, that's not a safe environment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. No other points of personal privilege. So, we've got a few more people that want to talk to us about non-agenda items. Leroy Thomas III. Mr. Thomas, hadn't seen you in a while. Good to see you, sir. Happy New Year, Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, and to our commissioners. You know, it's kind of sad that I hear about shooting, when I live in a neighborhood in Bloomfield, where there's shooting all the time. Little kids on the other side of 475, and all of the homes that backs up to Village Green. You'd be surprised. But I'm glad. I hope we can get it fixed, because we need to be together on this, to try and protect all people. Because if not, you can imagine people leaving this city. And that's basically where we're headed. But last night, I was doing my IDP, which is my independent development plan. And it said short time, short-term goals, long-time goals. And Mayor, it's been a year since I've been here, because I said I wasn't going to ever come down here to try and legislate morality. That's what we're trying to do when we come here. We're looking for you all to give us that magic potion that's going to fix the world. And so far, some of the things I've been seeing is for our sheriff, being asked, why we got a hundred and thirty-nine young people getting killed. It's not just his problem. It's everybody in this body's problem. Not just one man should know the answer. As a matter of fact, the sheriff is a reactive. He doesn't actually go out and cause this to happen. It's because of what he said. He said, blighted neighborhoods create blighted minds with blighted ideas. How in the world can blight? Some of you all drive to neighborhoods to pass blight every day. Go into your house. Go down Key Court. Look at the blight. Blighted houses call blighted ideas and blighted mindset. Wow, so now we're talking about education. This is a year for 2020. We ought to be able to see out of both eyes, and actually see where we're going with Macon and Middle Georgia. It's not about the haves and the have-nots. We all listen in this together. Hundred and fifty-three thousand people, sixty-five percent of Afro-Americans, forty-three percent, whatever. But you know what? Your problem's my problem. Urban blight is moving out. Macon Mall closing down. What in the world is going on here? We need to legislate. We need to build this city together. We need to come across those racial lines, put that to rest, and come together and move forward together, and create the city we're supposed to be. I met a lady today. I asked her, I said, are you from Ohio? She said, yeah. I love the weather, but I don't like the pay. The median pay for Middle Georgia is thirty-five thousand dollars. You're keeping people in poverty. We need, as a legislative body, figure out, we can save the Macon Mall. All of us get together, and we do a, what Mr. Tillman called it, opportunity zone. Don't let that mall, what, if the mall was vacant right now, what would happen? Oh, yeah, we could put all the homeless people in there. But what happened with that community? We're in the heart of Georgia. We centrally located in Georgia, in the middle. So goes the heart, so goes what? The whole body. So, let's fix this. Twenty twenty. Let's do this together. I'm timing myself, Mr. Mayor. I got, I got two more minutes.
And eighteen seconds.
You know, a famous politician said one time, you can't pull, young people cannot pull themselves up by the bootstraps when they're barefooted. We need to figure out how we can empower those young men that come in here, put Macon on the map, because they want a football team. Oh, I felt so good to see such opportunity in young people. But they need to realize this. Macon has a rich history of artists. George Washington, Booker T. Oh, did schools here. Roxy Theater. We got a rich history. Douglas Theater, Harry Tugman, Lena Horne, Little Richard, Otis Redding, James Brown. As a matter of fact, my uncle worked for James Brown, opened up two restaurants here. James Brown Golden Plateau, right here. Blue Moon. We need to relish in everybody's history, not just a special group of people. Because all these young people are the ones that can actually save our lives, because they're going to put IV needles in our arms, and change in our bedpan. One last thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I understand what you do. And I just want you to bring back a Center for Racial Understanding. Wow, that was a good thing, because we were able to build those bridges. You remember the Center for Racial Understanding, used to be on Second Street? We need to get beyond that. Or we can end up like Destin, Florida. I went to Destin, and I used to wonder why Burger King said we pay fifteen dollars an hour to flip burgers at Burger King. It's because the people that lived up in Defuniac Springs had to go across the Mid Bay Bridge to pay five dollars, because they had to get to those jobs. So, we're going to become this very rich municipality, with nobody in to be service workers. We all need to dwell in this together here. And I appreciate your time, and I look forward to coming back more, to talk to you, what we can do together to make this city the ideal place for people to move to and dwell in. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. You did an excellent job of time, with your time, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. John Smith? Mr. Smith, you didn't put down what you wanted to talk about. Are you still here, sir? Mr. John, John C. Smith, Beach Avenue? Apparently, he decided to leave. But Mr. Willie Frazier, I see Mr. Frazier here, want to talk to us about alcohol in historic places and neighborhoods, as well as the safety of the elderly and newly-built communities. But Mr. Frazier, thank you for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
How you doing, Mayor? Happy New Year. And Happy New Year to all of you that's standing up there forward. Yes, I did want to talk about alcohol, because it was on the agenda. But I understand, being close to last, and not being on, speaking during the time when it was on the agenda. But I was looking and recognizing that on the Capricorn downtown, when that building were redone, I recognized that that was a historic building and place, and it deals with history, just like I heard somebody talking about earlier. And now, I recognize that they want to serve alcohol, mixed drinks, and all of that. Then, I put my thoughts together. Alcohol, history, music, and all of that, it don't add up together, because are we going to drown all of our history here in Macon in alcohol? Are we going to turn around and take historical things that can be valuable to everybody in the community, and turn it into a club, a pub, or something that we get nothing out of, or anything grow? You see, when I speak about the elderly, I speak about Vine Via Towers. Seventy-year-old person, turned around and got carjacked, and hurt, and distant, and all of the places. See, those are places that we're building for the safety of our elderly. And it's surprising to me that I see all of these elderly people talking about how they feel unsafe, even where they live at. I live in one of the worst neighborhoods in this city. It's the reason why I choose to stand up and try to run for city government. I've tried to learn these processes. And to me, it's not about winning or losing or beating somebody, or putting somebody on Front Street. It's about moving this city to the place that it need to be moved to, about doing the right thing, not just for one select group, but for all of the citizens of Macon-Bibb. I think you need to be protected. I think you need to be safe where you are. I think there are places that we need to put alcohol, because I know those taxes are needed. So, I'm not here to be down on people about alcohol, and alcohol sales in certain places. It's just that, when it come to our history, that means more to me than a cup of liquor, or a beer, or all of that other stuff like that. Now, if the Capricorn wind up with beer alcohol sales, what is it going to be? The next alcoholic club, when we got a downtown full of clubs? I know you want to get in where you fit in, and I understand that. But I also understand that our history is all Macon got. And we want to keep our history at a place to where, when people come and want to go and visit these places, that they're turning around and really want to come and visit, and learn our history, be a part of, and help it to grow. Now, I need to be in a position to be able to help our city to grow, but yet, keep a clear mind. I used to drink, but I don't drink anymore. I haven't drunk in over thirty or forty-something years. And the thing about it, I'm not against people who drank, who drank. It's okay. But let's do it in the right way, and at the right time. Because at this time, we're trying to build our city. Each and every one of you are doing things and putting in on things that's trying to grow and build this city. And my hat's off to you. I applaud you, and doing stuff when I stand with you, not to move anybody out of the way, but to stand beside somebody, and really try to do our best here in the city of Macon-Bibb, to take us back to the top of where we've always been. I'm tired of people putting our city down. I'm tired of people feeling unsafe. I'm tired of people getting a partial answer, or answer that's not sufficing to what they're standing for. We need to put people in place, or either we need y'all to be in place, that turn around and at least, you know, try to push, to make this a better city for these people that want to stay here. These, these are the brackets to what Macon-Bibb is. If we lose that, we're losing everything. Take a deeper look into your city. I walked even through my community, and I feel like most of the people in my community in South Macon is incarcerated. I recognize that the undertaker done put a lot of them in the ground, and that's happening every day. And it's a sad situation. Everything a little desolate. I want to build South Macon back up, but not only South Macon, East Macon, West Macon, North Macon. I'm concerned about all of it. That's why I stand up here, and I stand for all sides of Macon, not just South Macon. I'm a star right there, and I hope that I can go from there, and that all of Macon will catch on. Mayor, thank you for all of your service, for all the years. I know you're going out this year. I'm going to miss you. You know, I'm going to be one person that miss you. I ain't mad at you. I'm going to miss you, but the next person that are coming in, I hope they do as well as you.
You might have kind of, Mr. Frazier. Thank you very much. Your time is incredible.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your patience, and appreciate you being here. Mr. Stanley Stewart wants to talk to us about Belvedere Manor and Weaver Heights. Mr. Stewart, thank you for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Members of the commission, I'll be real brief in talking about Belvedere Manor. I'm vice president of Belvedere Manor Weaver Heights Neighborhood Association. But what I have to talk about pales in comparison to what the people of Pinnacle Point are going through. And my heart goes out to you. I'm here not as a candidate for mayor. I'm here as a regular citizen tonight. Lake Tobosoffke, one of my good friends, Darren Richardson, Coach Richardson used to live out there. His son is sitting right over there. So, but I think also, the DNR is, is closing here in Macon, on Sherlin Drive. And not only should that be elongated to a mile, but also, you need to think about enforcement. And with DNR closing, nine times out of ten, the situation's going to get worse before it gets better. So, perhaps maybe the city can enforce some type of enforcement code within the sheriff's department or whatever, to help the citizens out, out there. Dr. Powell's presentation goes to your heart. And you don't want anybody to get killed. You want to make sure it's a proactive approach. Another thing I want to piggyback on, if I could, is a non-agenda thing as well. Commissioner Lucas talked about alcohol in the communities. A few weeks ago, we were talking about Bateman and Wade. I was prepared to talk at that P&amp;Z meeting, because I agree with the citizens of that area. Bateman and Wade used to be a great store. But now, it has kind of gone down. And alcohol also is a problem, not just in the Bateman Wade community, but also in East Macon and other areas of town. So, a lot of things can be dealt with in these meetings, in planning zoning meetings. They don't have to do, before they come to the forefront, so to speak. The last thing, though, is, of course, Belvedere Manor Weaver Heights. My neighborhood is a very old neighborhood now, and I'm one of the young people in the bunch. And they've sent me here tonight to talk about just three issues that they want to talk about. One is Reverend Dawson, Reverend and Mrs. Dawson, who live on Wells Place, say it's been thirty-two years since that street has been paved. And they would love to have somebody come out there and take a look at that street, and possibly get it paved. The second thing is, there's a pothole right there at Stratford and Bethune. It's been there for months now. People's cars are getting hurt as they go through there. They would love to have somebody come there and fix that pothole. The third and last thing is, they would love to see a light placed right there at the corner of Sherlin Drive and Stratford Drive. As people come around that corner, the light right now is right in their bound golf course. And when that light turns green, people zip out of there like they're going down on a NASCAR track. And the older members of our community now, their reflexes are getting slower. So, as they turn right out of Stratford onto Sherlin Drive, looking to the left, of course, these big eighteen rulers are coming. So, we need something to slow that traffic down, if you don't mind. So, perhaps the city could look into that and try to do something for us, if you don't mind. That's all I have to talk about. But I do want people to keep in mind, please, people at Pinnacle Point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart. We appreciate you being here. And speaking, speaking of Donald Richardson, Donald Richardson, and he's here tonight, wants to share with us some of his grassroots reflections. Mr. Richardson, good to see you, sir. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Genesis, chapter eleven. "And the whole earth was of one language and of one speech; and it came to pass, as they journeyed from the east, that they found a plain and land a shinar, and they dwelt there. And they said one to another, 'Go, let us make brick and burn them thoroughly.' And they had brick for stone, and slime had they for mortar. And they said, 'Go to, let us build us a city in a tower, whose top may reach unto heaven. And let us make us a name, lest we be scattered abroad upon the face of the whole earth.' And the Lord came down to see the city and the tower, with the children of men built it. And the Lord said, 'Behold, the people is one, and they have all one language. And this they began to do; and now nothing will be restrained.'" And this they began to do, and now nothing will be restrained from them, which they have imagined to do. Go to, let us go down, and there confound their language, that they may not understand one another's speech. So, the Lord scattered them abroad from thence, upon the face of all the earth. And they left off to build the city. Therefore, is the name of it called Babel? Because the Lord did there, confound the language of all the earth. And from thence did the Lord scatter them abroad, upon the face of all the earth. These are the generations of Shem. Shem was a hundred years old, and beggared Arfaxat two years after the flood. And Shem lived after he had beggared Arfaxat five hundred years, and beggared sons and daughters. And Arfaxat lived five and thirty years, and beggared Selaah. And Arfaxat lived after he beggared Selaah four hundred and three years, and beggared sons and daughters. And Selaah lived thirty years, and beggared Eber. And Selaah lived after he beggared Eber four hundred and three years, and beggared sons and daughter. And Eber lived four and thirty years, and beggared Pelak. And Eber lived after he beggared Pelak four hundred and thirty years, and beggared sons and daughters. And Pelak lived thirty years, and beggared Rehu. And Pelak lived after he beggared Rehu two hundred and nine years, and beggared sons and daughters. And Rehu lived two and thirty years, and beggared Seroc. And Rehu lived after he beggared Seroc two hundred and seven years, and beggared sons and daughters. And Seroc lived thirty years, and beggared Nahor. And Seroc lived after he beggared Nahor two hundred years, and beggared sons and daughters. And Nahor lived nine and twenty years, and beggared Teriah. And Nahor lived after he beggared Teriah a hundred and nineteen years, and beggared sons and daughters. And Teriah lived seventy years, and beggared Abram, Nahor and Huron. Now, these are the generations of Teriah. Teriah beggared Abram, Nahor and Huron, and Huron beggared Locke. And Huron died before his father Teriah in the land of his nativity, in the earth of Chaldees. And Abram and Nahor took them wives. The name of Abram's wife was Seriah, and the name of Nahor's wife, Miciah, the daughter of Huron, the father of Miciah and the father of Iskiah. But Seriah was barren and she had no child. And Teriah took Abram his son, and Locke the son of Huron, his son's son, and Seriah his daughter-in-law, and his son Abram's wife. And they went forth with them from earth of Chaldees to go into the land of Canaan. And they came into Huron and dwelt there. And the days of Teriah were two hundred and five years, and Teriah died in Huron." And this is from my book of common prayer, the Protestant Episcopal Church. So, even though I've, I'm following that lectionary, so it's still following the line of all of the other prayers that I have presented here over the years. So, I'm following that lectionary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. We appreciate you sharing those grassroots reflections with us. We appreciate your patience and appreciate you being here, sir.
You're welcome.
No points of personal privilege being requested. We've reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Now, Mr. Stewart, the fact that Abby Casaurus was covering Channel 13 in the government center, if we believe in doing this, we're not sure.
Yeah. Abby's leaving at six.
Oh, that's right. Abby Casaurus from Channel 13, last day, last day with us, going to Knoxville, Tennessee. We'll miss you.